The City Council meeting for December 16, 2013, for the city of Issaquah, Washington, is called to order at two minutes after 7:00 p.m. And the council and I invite those who are present to join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag, if you wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ava, since this is your last meeting of your four years as our mayor, I've got a certificate of appreciation from the city of Issaquah, and it's hereby awarded to you in recognition of many years of dedication and service to the citizens of Issaquah as mayor, 1998 to 2013, dated the 16th day of December, 2013, and signed by the city clerk and myself as council president.
Thank you.
In addition to that, I have a resolution here that I will read, and it's Resolution Number 2013-21. Whereas Mayor Ava Freisinger is Issaquah's longest-serving mayor, a dedicated advocate for our community, and a public servant for most of her adult life, and whereas she has served as mayor for 16 years, along with prior service on the City Council and Planning Policy Commission, and whereas, both in her public and private life, she's committed to sustainability and balancing our communities' environmental, economic, and social needs, and whereas she provided exceptional leadership to Issaquah City Council, staff, and volunteers for more than 16 years as mayor, and whereas she has successfully managed one of King County's fastest-growing cities, which has seen a 214% increase in population since 1998, when she was first elected mayor, and whereas she has successfully implemented smart growth policies to ensure that the city of Issaquah grows in a responsible way that preserves open space and our quality of life, and whereas she was instrumental in the creation of the Issaquah Highlands and the Talis Urban Villages, which have set the standard in our region for sustainable development, and whereas she spearheaded the preservation of an impressive amount of open space in and around Issaquah, including more than 140 acres on Park Point, and -- you can see that she has accomplished an awful lot in 16 years serving our citizens -- and whereas she led the creation of the Central Issaquah Plan, ensuring a sustainable legacy for our environment and our economy in the decades to come, and whereas she ensured Issaquah was involved on a regional level with her service on countless boards, commissions, and communities, and committees, including the King County Board of Health, a Regional Coalition for Housing, Salmon Recovery Council, Eastside Transportation Partnership, Seattle King County Advisory Council on Aging and Disabilities, and more, and whereas she is vest-wearing docent at the Issaquah Salmon Hatchery, an expert on salmon policy, and a leader for the Friends of the Issaquah Salmon Hatchery, and whereas she deeply loves Issaquah, its people, and the natural beauty that surrounds us. The City Council of Issaquah, Washington, hereby resolves as follows. The Issaquah City Council hereby officially expresses its deep gratitude to Ava Freisinger for her exemplary leadership, decades of service to this community, and tireless dedication to Issaquah. Resolved the 16th day of December, 2013, approved Fred Butler, Council President. And with that...
Council President Butler?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion. I would move that for the passage of Resolution Number 2013-21, where the City Council of the city of Issaquah, Washington, expressing its deep gratitude to Ava Freisinger for her exemplary leadership, decades of service to this community, and tireless dedication to Issaquah.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're just going to switch you guys for a photo op. There you go. Okay.
And Ava? There are some other things over here. As a small token of our appreciation, a beautiful orchid that you don't need to carry back up to the dais, but I see that there is at least someone here who will help you get this home this evening.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, everyone. It is a privilege to have served you, and an honor, and a very humbling experience to be given such appreciation, and I've struggled with this because typically it's not appropriate to tell people that you love them in public settings. It may be thought ill of, but I love all of you very, very much. And because I'm partially Scottish, I get maudlin after a half glass of sparkling cider. Next, on the agenda this evening, is an opportunity for members of the public to talk about things that are maybe on the agenda, or they may not. These are items of concern or interest to people in the community, and it is a chance to speak to the council, express concerns, express approval, support, whatever it is that you want to tell the council. And it isn't a dialogue, but it is a chance for the council to hear from the public as to what is important to them. The guidelines for public participation are that when you're recognized, you use the lectern and the microphone, so you may be seen and heard by people who are here in council chambers, and also by those who are viewing the council meeting on our government access channel 21. We ask that you state your name and your address, your relationship to the city, if you want to emphasize something, that you're a resident, a property owner, a business owner, whatever it is that you think is significant at that point. We ask that you limit comments to five minutes or fewer, and if you have written comments, please submit them for the city clerk. Now, audience comments are the subject of anything that is not the topic of a public hearing, and this evening there are two items that are the topics of public hearings. One is Agenda Bill 6763, annexation of the Issaquah Middle School property, and then the other one is Agenda Bill 6754, Issaquah School District levy and consideration of a resolution in support. So both of those are presented as topics of a public hearing. Any other topic would be appropriate for audience comments, and so I will ask if there's anyone who has signed up for audience comments.
Who are Brett Heath, followed by Robin Kelly?
Thank you. Brett Heath, 670 First Avenue, Northeast, Issaquah. And I would just like to take this opportunity tonight to thank Mayor Freisinger. I just want to say thank you for your leadership. I want to say thank you for your dedication, for your hard work, your compassion, your insight, your sense of -- your wry sense of humor, wonderfully wry sense of humor. It's been a joy, and I -- you have put in many, many hours and many, many years of public service, and you've served the city of Issaquah extremely well. So I just want to say, certainly for myself, and I believe I can speak for your entire staff, in saying that it's truly been a pleasure working for you and serving with you, and you will be missed. I know your family's looking forward to getting you back, but we will miss you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Robin Kelly, followed by Greg Tryon.
Madam Mayor and council, in keeping with the theme so far this evening, all of those wherases that Fred said, ditto. Whereas you always made yourself available to festivals and the community. Whereas I'm Scottish, too.
Robin and I mustn't look at each other.
Whereas you led and encouraged us to celebrate in a fun, unique way. Whereas your sense of humor and open-mindedness encouraged us maybe to go beyond the norm. But this year in particular, even naming Issaquah during the festival weekend Fishiquah. Whereas your professional and knowledge and learned poise, and just your unique person led us through Morocco, presenting Issaquah and the United States in a style that couldn't be replicated. Whereas you've given 16 years, you've earned R&amp;R. So on behalf of myself and the festival office, we want you to put up your feet, have some cocoa, take some time with Bill, and relax. You've earned it, but we hope you'll like the salmon, and you keep coming back.
Thank you.
And last on my list, Greg Tryon.
Madam Mayor, I'm Greg Tryon with Eastside Fire and Rescue, the deputy chief. I've been asked to speak on behalf of Chief's Optic. His first statement was to say thank you. You brought Eastside Fire and Rescue together. You were a leading force in that. You kept it together in its dark days, both in the beginning and towards the most recent times. It's much appreciated. He would also say that the things that he's learned from you, and he's had the opportunity because of the unique construction of Eastside Fire and Rescue, to work with hundreds of elected officials, and to say that he can put you in the top five as the people that he always listens to, always goes, wow, I wish I would have thought of that. I wish I could have said it in the same manner that she said it. And that's the reason he wanted to say thank you, and wish you dearly in your future as you go back to your family. For myself, I consider this. I'm a resident of Issaquah finally once again. I grew up in the greater Issaquah area, gone to school here, come back home. And so when I had this opportunity within the last couple of years to step in this new role where I get to deal with the upper levels of city government, I couldn't have been more fortunate to have been assigned to the representative city of Issaquah, between the staff, between the elected officials. It's a fun place to work. It's a place where I learn every single day. I'm encouraged to ask questions. I'm encouraged to stand up and say what I believe, and help you make the right decisions. And as I have the opportunity to work other places in our jurisdiction, I am truly thankful that I've had this opportunity, and I definitely see that as a guiding principle that you led. So thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other people who have signed up to speak during audience comments? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak during audience comments? Yes, sir.
Gary Young with Polygon Northwest Company, 11624 Southeast Fifth, Suite 200, Bellevue, Washington. It's a great honor to be here tonight, Ava, to wish you the best and thank you. We've been building in the Issaquah community for over 20 years. We are currently -- we have four different projects underway now in Issaquah Highlands, which will total over 500 homes, apartments, and townhomes. That's been an evolution of over 20 years of working in the city, and with your leadership and with all the programs that have been established in the city, it truly is an honor to be a home builder, and we will continue to work diligently to uphold the quality and the standards that we adhere to, and to know that you'll always be there paying attention and making sure we are. So we appreciate this opportunity to thank you for that. There's an Agenda Bill item, 47, or sorry, is it 6747, coming up relating to development agreement between Polygon Northwest and the city, related to our recent property we purchased in Issaquah Highlands. We're very excited to have this opportunity to work with the city. We think by going forward with the development agreement, that gives us an opportunity to lay good groundwork for a great future on this very important property that will mean a lot to the city and us as we go forward. So we appreciate the support of the council moving ahead, and we look forward to working the city for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak during audience comments who hasn't had an opportunity? Yes, sir.
Good evening, council and mayor, and my heartfelt Craig Keller, P.O. Box 321, Issaquah. And my heartfelt congratulations for your self-sacrifice, Madam Mayor, in your many years here. Our rise tonight is, it's not a public hearing, but one of the agenda items is the appointment of committee for a voter pamphlet statement on Proposition 1. I just wanted to -- it's a learning experience for all of us, and so I just wanted to, first time I've gone through this process, and wanted to strongly endorse three Issaquah residents, Mrs. Elaine Wolfe, Mr. Tim Eves, and Mrs. Sibella Giorello, for the committee. I'm grateful for your consideration. I know they do a good job in helping to educate the public on this issue upcoming. I just thought I'd bring a little education tonight, if I may. I deeply appreciate the city's cooperation and involvement in the recent working out of the ballot title, and one of the things that was interesting that I learned and tried to share in that process and ongoing will be the interesting complexity of how forced bag charges are taxed. I did a little safari in Issaquah. This is the result of my bag safari. I visited 12 stores on December 4, and I found that six of them charged sales tax on the bags, and six of them didn't. And I don't blame any of them. It's just a commentary on the complexity of this regulation and part of the ongoing education process. The Department of Revenue in the state has a webpage entitled "The Taxability of Paper Bag Fees." I quote, "Various Washington cities have passed ordinances that require retail establishments to charge customers a minimum fee for certain carryout bags. Question: Is the paper bag fee subject to retail sales tax?" Answer: Yes. The department has determined that the charge to customers for paper bags is a retail sale subject to retail sales tax and the retailing BNO tax. Similarly, the charge for selling reusable shopping bags is subject to retail sales tax and the retailing BNO tax. The cities of Seattle, Bellingham, and others have recently passed or are considering ordinances that prohibit the use of plastic carryout bags. The ordinances reviewed by the department also require or authorize retail establishments to collect a fee from customers who request paper carryout bags. This fee is not remitted to the city, but retained by the retail establishment. The fee is not collected by the retail establishment as an agent for the city, and therefore is not exempt of tax." So it's just part of the education process. It's been very interesting for me, and I just commend everyone's study of this over the next several weeks, and I thank you. I look forward to council action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has not had an opportunity to speak during audience comments who wishes to speak? Anyone who wishes to speak? Third call, anyone who wishes to speak during audience comments? Hearing and seeing no one else who wishes to speak during audience comments, audience comments are closed. The next item on the agenda this evening are council committee and regional reports, and I will start with Councilmember Paulie. No report? All right, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Land and Shore met on December 10, and we had four items on our agenda. The first was Agenda Bill 6739 relating to 2013 Comprehensive Plan Amendments, and the committee recommended that this come back before the council on January 6 on the consent agenda, because it was just fairly routine. We also discussed Agenda Bill 6749, right-of-way dedication regarding High Street west of 9th and Issaquah Highlands, and that is in the consent agenda tonight. So that will pass, assuming the consent agenda passes. We also discussed Agenda Bill 6747, Polygon Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement. That's on the regular agenda tonight. And then we also discussed Agenda Bill 6758, Development Services Fees, and that's also on the regular agenda tonight for discussion. The next Land and Shore meeting is January 14, which is a Tuesday, 5:00 p.m., right here in council chambers, and I do not have an agenda set yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marts?
No report.
Councilmember Scher?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to members of the viewing public. The Eastside Transportation Partnership met on Friday, December 13. We had a financial update and update on the East Link project from Sound Transit, from the Executive Director of Finance, and the Deputy Project Director talking about the various eastside light rail stations that will soon be under construction as part of ST2. And there were some questions asked from the partnership with respect to financial issues relating to Sound Transit and the scope of certain projects. We also had a presentation from Renton Councilmember Don Person concerning connecting roadways, which is essentially a discussion about ETP taking a stronger stand on local roadways as opposed to regional freeways and connectors, and the importance of identifying potential smaller local projects that can be used to enhance mobility for our various respective jurisdictions. We also had a legislative session report from Janice Atkins with the King County Executive's Office, talking about the current state of a potential legislative transportation package, which is still an ongoing effort in Olympia. The ETP procedures were put off until next month, so that ongoing odyssey, probably two years in the making, will take just a little bit longer. And all our jurisdictions were reminded that our membership dues are now payable to ETP for next year. In addition to that regional report, the council infrastructure committee will be meeting in the month of January. However, we do not yet have a date scheduled for that meeting. We're currently working on respective calendars, and it's likely that'll be on the website and/or announced at the first January council meeting with an agenda. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Services and Safety met on the 5th of December. In this meeting, we simply had a discussion in regards to the ad hoc, the Eastside Fire and Rescue ad hoc committee. We were discussing the inter-local agreement that the committee had proposed, the documents, the presentation that they had. This was for discussion only, and then that, we had a great discussion there, and Councilmember Winterstein, thank you, sorry, too much of that sparkling cider stuff we had earlier, was able to do a nice walkthrough in regards to what the committee had proposed to us. So that sort of leads me to my next report, which was Eastside Fire and Rescue, December 12. And on that Board of Directors meeting, we had three items in regards to the Eastside Fire and Rescue ad hoc committee, in regards to the funding model, and both the ILA. So the first one, the inter-local agreement for the funding model, came back with a slight amendment. There was a couple of them, mostly just wordsmithing after legal had taken a look at it. There wasn't any factual changes in it, just some wordsmithing. So that was approved. The second one we took a look at was 2013 Item 50, and this was the inter-local agreement. Again, we had a really great discussion in regards to the different prospects in regards to this particular inter-local agreement. It was approved and is now going back to the representative board, so it'll be going back to all different five committees, or the two cities and the three commissions for their approval, and then back to Eastside Fire and Rescue. But it has been approved and sent forward from our board. The last one that was simply a walk-on that night that we had was the request for staff to take a look at an operational committee for us. This was something that had been discussed early on and brought forward by one of the partners. So we did ask that the staff wouldn't take some time and take a look at our operations committee and bring that back to us. The feeling was that this would help aid in the final partner coming back approving the nonprofit for us. So a busy time with Eastside Fire and Rescue, but it's feeling like everything is working well. The approval of a very -- the funding model was very great, and now we're working forward and finishing up the inter-local agreement. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein?
No report.
Councilmember Butler?
No report.
Mayor's report this evening, there will be an executive session held this evening for the purpose of discussing potential litigation, and that is RCW 42.30.110 bracketed, one bracketed lowercase i. This item is expected to take approximately 30 minutes. Action is not anticipated. So that will be at the latter part of the council meeting. Second item, our community is in the midst of exciting changes, and you can help shape our future as a member of the Issaquah City Council. We are seeking a qualified candidate, candidates, to fill a vacant position on the council. If you would like a chance to get involved in the most important issues facing Issaquah, such as enhancing our economic development, addressing growth, and preserving our outstanding quality of life, please consider applying. And for more information, please visit our website at issaquahwa.gov. Third item, please be aware that city offices will be closed next week on Tuesday, December 24, and Wednesday, December 25, in observance of the Christmas holiday. And that concludes the mayor's report for this evening. Next, I will ask if the accounts have been reviewed.
They have.
All right. And then I will ask the council's pleasure on the items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Butler?
I would move approval of the consent calendar as submitted.
Second.
Okay, and that was by... Councilmember Winterstein, all right? All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. The next item is a public hearing, and that is on Agenda Bill 6763, annexation of the Issaquah Middle School Issaquah Middle School property. And the recommendation coming back from the Administration Development Services Department is to adopt a particular ordinance having to do with the 5.45 acres of land, which include the majority of the Issaquah Middle School building and the sports field. So that's the topic of the public hearing. I will go through the process for the public hearing and then we'll be hearing a staff presentation of why this action is being considered this evening. So the process for the public hearing is essentially identical to that for audience comments. We ask that when you are recognized, that you step up to the lecture and use the microphone so you may be seen and heard here and on television. We ask that you state your name and your address and if you wish to state a relationship to the city or particular interest in the topic, that would be the time to do that. We ask that you limit comments to five minutes or fewer and again, if you have written remarks, please submit them for the city clerk. And before I open the public hearing, I'll ask for the staff presentation on this topic.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be very brief tonight. This is the third type of annexation you've done this year, so that's pretty exciting. It's called the direct petition method and it requires a public hearing before you're able to approve the ordinance that would annex it. It's different than McCary Woods, which was a municipal annexation that you were just able to act and adopt the ordinance and it's different than Kohani that you've asked to have an election. So, so three types of annexations you guys have done this year, that's, that's pretty amazing, I think. The, as the mayor mentioned, it's a very small parcel. It's less than six acres. It includes the part of the middle school and part of the sports fields. The major reason that they would like to be annexed at this time is they're about to undergo a major remodel and construction phase and they would like to do all the permitting and construction with the city of Issaquah and we would like that too. So we're together on this and are there any questions from you all before you open the public hearing?
With that, the public hearing on this topic is opened at 7:35 PM and I will ask if there are any people who have signed up to speak?
There are not.
All right, there are no people signed up to speak for this public hearing. I will ask if there is anyone present who hasn't had the opportunity to sign up to speak to the annexation of the middle school property who would like to speak? Anyone who wishes to speak on this topic? Anyone who wishes to speak on the topic? Third call, anyone who wishes to speak on this topic? Seeing and hearing, nobody who wishes to speak on this topic? The hearing is closed at 7:36 PM or as close thereto as can be figured out. So with that, the topic is in front of the council and a motion would be appropriate. Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah, I would move that the council adopt ordinance number?
2702?
2702, annexing approximately 5.45 acres of land, which includes the majority of the Issaquah Middle School building and sports field, zoning the annexed land, community facilities, facilities, requiring the land to be assessed and taxed at the same rate and on the same basis as other property within the city and to assume its proportionate share of the city's existing indebtedness.
Second?
Moved by Winterstein, seconded by Butler. And now I will ask council if you have questions or comments? Any questions? Any need for discussion? I'm seeing head nodding that looks as if there aren't any questions?
No.
Are you raising a pencil for?
No.
Okay. All right. So it doesn't appear that there is any council desire to talk about this. Are you ready to act on it in that case? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. Next on the agenda is a second public hearing and that is Agenda Bill 6754, Issaquah School District Levy, consideration of resolution in support. This is coming back from the administration and the city clerk and this is the means by which the council may express support of something. And this is the, this is the process that we have always used in the past. We always treat this as a public hearing so that people who wish to speak pro and con that topic have the chance to do so. So do we have any particular staff presentation on this or?
Um, there essentially has, Councilmember Marts?
Councilmember Marts, would you like to speak?
Uh, I would probably reserve my comments for deliberation.
All right.
I would be, I would be hard pressed to make comments without speaking for or against this measure.
Okay. All right. Again, the process for the public hearing is akin to audience comments. It's just like what you heard a few minutes ago. When you're recognized, come to the lecture and use the microphone. Please give us your name, address. If you want to indicate a relationship or a particular interest, pro or con, please feel free to do so at that time. Ask that your comments be five minutes or fewer and if you have written comments, please submit them to the clerk. And with that, this public hearing is opened at 7:40 PM and I will ask if there is anyone who has signed up to speak.
There is not.
All right. I have seen two people rise, so I will ask the gentleman to come forward and the lady who is following him there. So.
Hello, Ron Thiele, Superintendent of the Issaquah School District. And before I talk about the, our upcoming levy elections, I just have to make a comment to Madam Mayor and just wanted to note that under your leadership for the past 16 years, the city of Issaquah and the Issaquah Public School District have had a very collaborative and productive relationship and you've always been very approachable and willing to meet with us, to talk about our common issues and we have appreciated you greatly just down the road on Holly Street and congratulate you on your retirement from 16 years of public service as mayor. And if you get bored, you can contact me. I've got some great volunteer opportunities for you in the Issaquah School District. So just wanted to note that on this very special evening and thanks for putting us on the agenda tonight so we could come here and kind of celebrate your, your time as mayor as well.
Thank you.
I believe that the council has received a packet of information about the, the school levies, so I didn't, in keeping with our efforts at increased sustainability, I didn't want to bring a bunch of paper tonight, but I do believe you, you have those and just wanted to, to let you know that we, we do have a levy election coming, Issaquah Public Schools, on February 11th, 2014. Levis are a very important part of how we fund public education in Washington State. The maintenance and operation levy alone represents 21% of all of our, all of our operating budget, so it's very, very significant. That is a four-year levy. That is a replacement of an expiring or a renewal levy. We also have a replacement levy for our capital levy, which that makes up two large portions of critical repairs for all of our facilities as well as technology. A lot of people aren't aware that the state of Washington doesn't view technology as part of basic education, so all of the technology that you see and is used out in our schools has been provided by our, our local, our local voters through, through levis. We're very appreciative of that. That's also a four-year levy and then we have a one-year renewal of a transportation or bus levy. And those are important because, one, they help keep our fleet modern and efficient, which helps control operating costs and they also allow us to access additional state funding on a depreciation cycle. So while this levy is relatively small compared to the others, what it does for us in terms of leveraging state dollars is really important. And a lot of people aren't aware, we're, I believe, the 13th largest school district in the state, but we have the sixth largest transportation fleet. Busing is a big part of what we do over our 110 square miles. So obviously, these levis are very, very important to the school district and we think it's important to reach out to all of our community partners as we go through this process. I want to also invite, she's a member of our Board of Directors, but tonight, she's here speaking on behalf of the Volunteers for Issaquah Schools, Ann Moore, who's going to speak a little bit about how the campaign works.
My name is Ann Moore. I live at 6530 155th Avenue Southeast in Bellevue and as Superintendent Thiele said, I am an elected school board director for the Issaquah Schools. And I am here tonight as a part of Volunteers for Issaquah Schools, which is a grassroots campaign organization that promotes passage for the Issaquah School District bonds and levis. As Superintendent Thiele said, we have an upcoming election, February 11th, 2014, with three levis that are absolutely critical to the operation of our schools. They will allow us to maintain the educational services and opportunities that we provide to our children in our schools. We have excellent Issaquah schools that help to promote, you know, are a part of the excellent Issaquah community that you helped provide to the citizens here, specifically in Issaquah. And so it's really a win-win for the city and for the schools to maintain the really good schools that we have. As he talked about, we have the M&amp;O levy, which is a replacement levy and keeps the funding within our schools. It's critical to our operation. The capital levy that provides capital repairs and technology. That technology piece is so important with such lacking funding from our state and technology provides so much opportunity, both for our teachers, teaching in our classroom, training for teachers, and the technology for the students in our classroom. Technology is a big part of our world today and it's a critical and essential skill for our students. And then the bus levy, which is important for safety, security efficiencies. The, together, these three levis would be an increase of $40 on a $500,000 house. It's just a small increase. It keeps us, per year, per year, thank you. This keeps us at a level that is actually below where we were two years ago before we passed our bond. So nice maintenance of our taxes. The Issaquah School District has a AAA rating from Moody's, which we're very proud of and have had 11 consecutive exemplary audits, so we have excellent financial management. And additionally, we have the lowest administrative cost in, for school districts of all the King County schools. This funding is more important than ever for our schools and so I encourage you all to vote to endorse our levis. And then before I go, I, in hopes that you do endorse, if any of you would like these fabulous and well sought-after car magnets, I will leave these for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who has signed up to speak on this public hearing?
There are not.
Is there anyone who hasn't had the opportunity to speak on the topic of this public hearing who would like to speak? Second call on that. Third call. Anyone who hasn't had the chance to speak who wishes to? Hearing and seeing no one who wishes to speak on the topic of this public hearing, the public hearing is closed at 7:47 PM. Council wish to take some sort of action upon this topic? Councilmember Marts?
I move we approve Resolution Number 2013 dash?
22?
22, supporting Issaquah School District's 2014 replacement of maintenance and operations levy, capital projects levy, and school bus levy set for special election, February 11th, 2014.
Okay, moved by Marts and seconded by Winterstein. And now this is open for discussion by the council. Councilmember Marts?
So it's hard for me to speak about our school district without getting emotional because school is such, our public school system is such an essential part of what makes Issaquah what it is. I have said many times, no one moves here for the weather. Schools, along with the natural beauty that we have in Issaquah and the economic opportunities and the great housing, is an essential, critical piece of, of who we are and, and our ongoing vibrancy as a community. I've been lucky enough, my oldest child started kindergarten two weeks after we moved here. She's now in 10th grade. She's gotten to see Diane Holt do amazing things at Issaquah Valley Elementary. She's gotten to benefit from Paula Phelps's leadership at Issaquah High and now that she's moved on to a senior administrative position within the school district. So our family has, has benefited so greatly. You know, Superintendent Thiele is a, is a modest fellow and he, and he doesn't brag as much as maybe he could. An example would be that beautiful high school we have has, I believe, the lowest per square foot, the renovation had the lowest per square foot cost of any of the renovations that have been done on the east side. So if people in the community wonder if the school district is being a good steward to their dollars, yes, they are. And many of us in the community stay involved through Volunteers for Issaquah Schools and Issaquah Schools Foundation to help assure that and to help assure the ongoing vibrancy that then translates on to our, to our city. So this is why I'm so very much in favor of, of supporting this levis, this set of levis this evening.
Thank you. Other comments or discussion? Councilmember Scher?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my children are just starting to take advantage of all the wonders that the school district has to offer and, you know, in our limited time at Issaquah Valley Elementary, I can echo Tola's comments about Principal Holt and the wonderful things that that school does and the great atmosphere that it is and the, the ongoing renovations there that will make that a very beautiful and much more safe facility as well when those are completed. So I'm in support of this resolution and in support of these levis. You know, I think in many ways, it's unfortunate that we as a society have to resort to levis to help fund our school district, that the state is not funding education as well as it could be. And in fact, the state Supreme Court has spoken on that very issue and has directed our state legislature to provide better funding for education in Washington. Just recently, I received a letter as, as a parent in the district regarding, I guess it's called the gifted program, it has a different name in our district, but informing that students would begin being tested for that program. But the state didn't provide any funding to actually carry out and implement that program. So again, we have mandates and we have requirements and we have needs that are difficult to fulfill. And with the maintenance and operations, the school bus and the capital levy, those will all help ensure a vibrant future for our students and our community and I'm pleased to support this resolution.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. So my family has had the privilege of, well, three of my oldest children have passed through the school system and my fourth child is a junior at Issaquah High School. And I know that they benefited from their education by the generosity and care and concern of the community members throughout the school district for, in the decades preceding that funded these buildings that they first attended, that maintained those buildings, that maintained, bought those buses that they rode to school. And we as a family benefited from those facilities and from that staff and from that infrastructure and I'm going to support this resolution and this levy and we're going to play it forward. And I hope that this investment, if it should have passed and benefit young families entering the school district, such as council, my colleague on the council, Councilmember Scher, his family enters into the school district, that they can benefit just as we have over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Is the council ready to vote then on Resolution 2013-2022? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. Next on the agenda this evening is Agenda Bill 6763, oh, excuse me, I'm looking in the wrong spot, Agenda Bill 6758, Amending Land Use and Engineering Fees in Issaquah Municipal Code Title III. And there's a note in brackets that says this was formerly Agenda Bill 6668. This has been seen by Land and Shore, and we have our Director of the Development Services Department here to speak to this. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to provide kind of an overview of where we've been with this Agenda Bill since it left the November 12th Fee Workshop that we held here. And so I'll just go over this information fairly briefly. At the November 12th Fee Workshop, we heard your comments that a fee proposal should provide for a $400,000 increase to revenues, that it should move to full cost recovery, and show options for an 80%, 90%, and 100% cost recovery over multiple years. The fee schedule should also provide for reasonable and fair advance notice and minimize fee increases to the single-family, small business, tenant improvements, and remodels. And since the Fee Workshop, we worked on questions that were provided there. We created a staff report that answers questions that were brought up. We further refined the fees, taking into consideration special attention to fees that impacted the single-family and small business. And in some cases, we also provided a subsidy that included up to 94% fee reductions. And we provided a new spreadsheet illustrating fee options using 24 projects, and I'll go over that in just a minute. At the Fee Shop, Workshop, you had asked for a couple of project examples that illustrated how the fees would change or might impact a project. And so for reference, this particular illustration up here is on page three and four of the staff report, and I'll quickly walk you through this. So this is a 45-unit multifamily apartment valuation, it's a little bit over $13 million. The bottom line on this chart shows that the current fees would have been $40,274. The new fees under this proposal would be $66,762, and that's a difference or increase of $26,488, which amounts to a .005 increase of the overall project valuation cost. And that's the important piece that we walk away with in answering earlier questions that asked at what point do higher fees drive away development. What we heard from our consultants is that the increase at this level typically does not drive away development. Now to address the fee changes that we put together a data sheet that illustrates a number of the objectives that you asked for. In your packet, this would be Agenda Bill Exhibit D. It looks something like this. There's two sheets contained into it, has multicolored lines in it, yellow and tan. At this point, looking at this, the detail's too small, but what it does indicate is that the fees, they're based on our 2014 estimates. We show projects in here that are of high probability of moving forward. We've illustrated both the land use and the engineering fees, and the three-year phase in at 80, 90, and 100% cost recovery. And we show options for adopting the dates and how those dates impact the fees that we would collect over the years. So the next slide here, this is the copy of the bottom line for that table, and it's on page two of your Exhibit D. One of the main factors that we want to point out is the ability for, of these fees that influences our goal of collecting $400,000 in additional revenue is based on when those projects actually come into the city. And as shown on the colored spreadsheet, those that are on this sheet that indicate yellow, there's about 10 projects out of 24. And out of that, that's about 41% that will likely come in between January and March. Then there's another nine of those projects that are tan-colored, and those are likely to come in between March and June. And that means with a July adoption date, 80% of those projects will pay current fees. So at the Land and Shore Committee, the fees were discussed in quite a bit of detail, along with the impacts of the adoption dates. And from those discussions, I heard that attaining cost recovery was important, so was raising $400,000 in additional revenues, keeping advance notice, but recognize that if we keep a July 1 adoption date, then 80% of the applications would pay existing fees. And looking at phasing fees over three years, that provided for small incremental steps. The committee then focused on the April 1 bottom line figure of $1,866,674 as providing the means to accomplish that goal. So we left with the recommendation with Land and Shore's recommendation of pursuing 100% cost recovery effective April 4th, 2014. And that concludes my update. If there's any questions or further discussion on that?
Okay. This has gone to Land and Shore, as I understand it? And is there some action that the council wishes to take?
Probably. I would move to adopt ordinance number 2703, retitling Chapter 3.64, Amending Fees for Applications for Subdivisions and Zoning Actions as established in Chapter 3.64, Amending Engineering Fees as set forth in Chapter 3.65 of the Issaquah Municipal Code.
Second.
Okay, moved by Goodman and seconded by Mertz. And now this is open for discussion and questions from the council. Councilmember Goodman.
I would like to make just a few comments that I think are important to stress and also some things to make clear. In case it's not clear, the fees that are proposed to be changed are land use, for land use permits, not for building permits. The difference being that building permits are for the structure. So if you come in and you want to build a building or you build a house, the building permit fees are not proposed to be changed, those stay the same. These are for land use fees, and they're for uses of the land. So if you wanted to do a boundary line adjustment, or you wanted to get a variance, or you wanted to do, remove a tree or something, the fees that we're talking about tonight, those are the land use fees. The other change here are the site work permit fees, or the engineering fees, and what the staff has done is combine a number of fees into this one fee. And that creates a lot more simplicity, and in some cases, it also created lower overall fees. So if you come in to build a house and you, under our current code, there were about seven or eight different permits that you needed related to that site work, and now it's been combined into one, and it's just that one fee. And so the efficiency has allowed DSD to propose reducing some of those fees. So that's a good thing, I think. And I also wanted to stress that, what John said, that we had the goals, which were to recapture more of the cost, because we are losing enough fees that it's concerning, and we wanted fees that were more in line with our neighboring cities. I think the thinking being that if, why would we want to leave that so much money on the table? If this is the, generally the fees that are being charged in our neighboring jurisdictions, there isn't any reason that we would want to charge 50% less for those fees. And the other goal that we talked about from the work session was collecting $400,000 in additional fees next year, again, because we needed to fill a gap in our budget, and we were looking at these fees anyway, so we set sort of a tentative goal. And John and company came back and did a really good job of zeroing in on those fees and refining them a little bit, and we talked about them more, and really kind of scrubbed them very carefully. So the Agenda Bill accomplishes those goals that John talked about, about not charging 100% of the fee for all of the land use permits, because some we felt needed to be subsidized a little bit, single-family and some others, and so not all of the fees are being proposed to be recaptured at 100%. In your packet, there is a, there is a table that's entitled subsidized, and those are the fees that are being proposed to still be subsidized to some degree, I think up to 75% or a little more, some of them. Most of them have to do with single-family and small, small projects. The reason that Land and Shore, and I'll let the councilmembers, Winterstein and Butler, talk to their reasons, but generally, the reason that Land and Shore did not recommend phasing is because of what John mentioned, and that is because the, what we heard is that about 80% of the revenue from these projects comes from 20% of the projects, and they happen in the first quarter of each year. So we lose a lot by waiting to the middle of the year, and we also didn't see a reason to phase this out over three years. I don't think anybody came up with a reason why we would want to phase it in over three years. And the reason that we landed on April 1 is because what we heard is that mid-year implementation simply will not get us the $400,000. That's just, that was brought forward as a fact. And so we deliberated for quite a while on what to do, and so that's why we landed on April 1. When the 100% fee that was recommended, not all of them are 100% cost recovery, but that's why we landed where we landed. I wanted to make a couple of comments about some of the fees that are in here. One of them is the tree removal permit. There is, when you, at first glance, it looks as if we are charging a new fee of $243. That's not the case. The existing fee is $243, and so no change is proposed. But because the table doesn't reflect that we have an existing fee, it looks as if we're instituting a brand-new fee, and I've had some questions fielded to me on that. The, I think that's the only one I wanted to mention, except for the table on page 62 of your packet references a site work permit fees. And there is a row that's called Commercial, and for the site work permit fees, 0 to 25,000 square feet, the cost is $2 a square foot. Greater than 25,000 square feet, it's a dollar. And there is a column missing, greater than 100,000 square feet, it should be 50%. I'm trying to think if there are any other items that I wanted to mention. Anyway, I wanted to thank staff for all of your time and all of your patience in coming before Land and Shore and the various meetings that you came to. You answered all of the questions. I'm very comfortable with this. Raising fees is not popular, but it is very needed because we need to do a better job of covering our fees, and I just think that that's just, I think it's just a management practice, a best management practice for us to make sure that we are covering our fees better than we are, because we are backfilling them with the general fund, and so I'd rather see us be able to recover the fees from the folks who are using those services. So I will be supporting this tonight, and I'm sure we have some questions?
Questions from councilmembers or comments? Any questions or comments on this topic? Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. I've reviewed this, and thank you, Councilmember Goodman, for answering considerable amount of questions that I had this afternoon on the phone. If you could help me though, John, I just need a little understanding in regards to the variance piece on page 59, where it's talking about single-family, and the old fee was $1,013, and the new one is $11,000. Can you just explain this?
Sure. The fee in question is regarding a variance for single-family homes, and what we've provided is a 50% subsidy to that. The full fee would be $22,000 for that. I'm going to let Dave talk on the variance issues.
Sure.
Good evening. Dave Faber here. So why, I guess the question is, why is that fee so high? Why does it take that many hours? Well, a single-family variance generally occurs when you have a critical area, an environmentally critical area, so a property with steep slopes or wetlands, stream buffers. It has serious environmental issues as well as geotechnical, you know, safety issues for the slopes, for example. We often have neighbors who have lived around these vacant properties for decades, and suddenly there's a development request. So all of these factors generate a significant amount of time for staff to review these projects. And that's, that's why, in our experience of getting these variance requests once every two or three years, not many of them, they have taken a lot of time and energy, and thus the hours shown there, and that generates the fee that we're showing.
So those would be quite involved projects. This isn't a small variance that we're talking about in regards to?
No, no.
So how is that determined here? I mean, it just is lumping them as a variance?
How is that determined?
I mean, there are less sizable projects that are requesting a variance as opposed to a massive.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we have kind of two categories of adjustments available in our code. One is called the Administrative Adjustment of Standards, or the Administrative Minor Modification in the Urban Villages. Those are, they're kind of smaller variances, if you want to call that, a deviation that staff has given the authority to do so and to work with the neighbors on that. And that's often like reducing a setback from, you know, 20 feet down to five feet, or a fence going from eight, six to eight feet, or slightly larger variances than that. But this elevates it to a variance, which is a public hearing, which is heard in front of the hearing examiner, like the judge, after significant staff review. And again, the scenario usually is when our government regulations for usually environmentally critical areas have taken away all development potential of a property. So this is a relief valve to say, you know, to avoid the taking of property, we have this relief valve to find a reasonable use of the property that protects the environmental issues as well as gives the person some reasonable economic use of their property. So it's, it's a much greater variance scope than the smaller adjustments that staff are doing.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Goodman.
I was going to expand on that just a little bit. The last variance that Dave was talking about that the city did was, I don't know, five years ago, and it involved hundreds and hundreds of hours of staff time, and after a couple of years, the applicant abandoned it, and the city ate all of that cost. So they're, they're very few and far between, and the reason is because the properties are very, very challenged and very, very expensive to develop. And this is, I think the thought is, this is the cost of developing that property.
Well, that's well understood, and thank you for the further definition in regards, because I mean, a variance is, can be a multi- because I mean, a variance is, can be a multitude of different things, and just if you're going to look at this fee table, even, I mean, there is a highlight down here talking about the hearing examiner costs, so that does help with this.
If I could add to that, the other option, I was talking about the small AAS, the adjustment of standards, is on page one of this fee schedule, is shown to be $750 for those smaller ones that I was talking about. So that's where I feel like we are.
Minor modifications?
Yeah, right, right.
Okay.
We are giving the homeowner a fairly easy path to get to something that works.
And that fee went from just over $600 to $750.
Yeah, $607. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion on this topic? Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah, I have a few comments to make, thank you. So the study of our land use and engineering fees began much earlier this year. We believe the taxpayers were subsidizing too much of the costs of the related services. We also believe that we were undercharging when compared to our neighboring cities. Later, this council revamped our financial policies where we reaffirmed the policy for fees to cover the cost of delivering the services in most cases. More recently, the 2014 budget aims for ongoing costs to be covered by ongoing revenues with an adjustment in land use and engineering fees as a key component for achieving this goal. So tonight, with this action, should it pass, we accomplish all of these objectives while retaining a keen sense that our resident homeowners are due special consideration when pursuing land use changes. With tonight's action, we would dramatically reduce and in many places completely eliminate the city's subsidy to larger development projects. This means people's taxes will no longer be subsidizing development. We establish a roughly 50% subsidy criteria for homeowner-related land use fees. We make further progress on the Development Services Department's goal of creating customer-success-oriented service offerings. This can be seen in the new package of engineering services and a new single permit, that Stacy mentioned, that covers work from preliminary discussion through permitting to final inspection, thus making the development process more efficient and predictable for all. And finally, we complete the last piece of our financial plan for 2014 that demonstrates our strong commitment to sound fiscal policy. I will be supporting this action tonight.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Mertz.
So nobody likes to see fees or taxes go up, and, you know, the question naturally comes up, oh, is, you know, is government just growing because it can or taking fees because it can? And that's clearly not the case here, and I hope that anyone who has any questions goes back and takes a look at the budget process that was recently completed, because I think they will see that these types of, these types of careful considerations are why our city has weathered the ongoing economic challenges so well. I was talking to somebody earlier today, and they mentioned how Mayor Friesinger had been mayor through this entire long, ongoing economic challenge, and how our city had weathered it so well, and it was these, it's these types of decisions where we choose fees over taxes, where we cut things out of the budget during the budget process. It was a combination of expenditure cuts and revenue increases, which is how it should be in response to these, the sorts of ongoing challenges that our city has to deliver the services that our residents consider important. So I was one of the people on Land and Shore who made John's life challenging early on because I really pushed back strongly to make sure that we needed to do these fee increases and that we could do them in a way that was fair to everyone involved, and he's done a really masterful job of coming back and answering the council's questions on this issue. And so although I, you know, it pains me to see some of these fee increases, even though they're going towards cost recovery, I understand how some residents would say, wow, those are, you know, those are some high percentage increases. But once again, I encourage people to look at the fact that it is cost recovery and that it is within the context of, as Councilmember Winterstein pointed out, towards fee recovery so that it does not have to be, so that we are not having to do tax subsidy of these services that the city provides, and for all these reasons, I will be supporting this bill this evening.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Is the council ready to? Excuse me.
One thing, if you're going to make the fees go into effect on April 1, then my suggestion is on, unless it's somewhere else that I can't find, in section 6 of the ordinance, you would add a sentence at the end, "The fees shall go into effect on April 1, 2014."
Councilmember Goodman?
So is that a friendly amendment or?
It's a suggested amendment.
Or, sorry, I mean, is it a suggested friendly amendment? Oh.
So section 6.
So.
Section 6. We got to find section.
I guess I would.
He said section 6.
Make a motion.
A clarifying, a clarifying.
Clarifying amendment, that we add a section 6? We already have a section 6 in the ordinance?
Yes. At the end of 6.
But you add it to the end, I think, of section 6.
Okay. That the fees would be in effect on April 1, 2014, and also to reflect the additional column in the site work permit fees charged that greater than 100,000 square feet would be at 50 cents per square feet.
Second.
All right. Are you ready to act upon the amendments? All those in favor of the amendments, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Right, now you're back to the original motion. Is the council ready to act on that motion as amended? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously.
I just wanted to say thanks, my appreciation to the council, or just your very thoughtful and deliberate questions that you asked through that process. Thank you.
The next item to come before the council this evening is Agenda Bill 6747, and the topic of it is a development agreement which would be negotiated and prepared by the administration if this motion were to pass, and additionally in the motion, there is monthly oversight assigned to the Council Land and Shore Committee. And we have Keith Niven here to talk about this.
Madam Mayor, before I get started, I'd just like to say thank you. It's been my honor and privilege to serve you as part of this administration for the last 15 years. So thank you for letting me be part of your team. City Council, Keith Niven, with this Economic Development Department. So this evening, we're talking about a proposed development agreement for this property, which used to be called the Microsoft property up in Isiqua Highlands, and as you heard earlier from Mr. Gary Young from Polygon, has been purchased by Polygon Northwest. To orient you, for those of you who are less familiar at home, this is Swedish Hospital down at the south end. We just finished a development agreement for Swedish's expansion in this area up here. This is West Highlands Park. This is the Lakeside Quarry, and most of the property is north of Discovery Drive and east of Ninth Avenue, but there is a little tail down here which includes a stormwater pond, which was built by Microsoft. So what we're talking about is really, I think, we have three choices. There's allow the property to develop under the current Isiqua Highlands Development Agreement, recognizing that that development agreement really runs to 2017. A second choice would be, you know, letting the development agreement run out and applying some sort of standard zoning to the property after 2017, and then the third choice would be a new development agreement. So what I tried to do here was to kind of distill out how those different choices might play out. So what we're talking about, when Polygon bought the property, there's 1.2 million square feet of commercial entitlement from Isiqua Highlands that went with it. They also purchased 265 remaining housing units from Port Blakely, so in total, we're talking about 1,265 equivalent residential units. That's underneath the Highlands Agreement. If we did not have a development agreement, then entitlement becomes a moot point. There really is no entitlement. It's just whatever can be developed under whatever zoning we put on the property, and that's why I have not applicable under that. If we're talking about a new development agreement, so far in the conversations we've had with the property owner, we're not talking about increasing the development at all. We're talking about basically taking that 1,265 ERUs and maintaining it at 1,265. The zoning, so I'm going to flip down to the next line, the zoning in Isiqua Highlands allows residential from 5 to 80 units per acre, retail and/or commercial with a maximum floor area ratio of 1 to 1 and 1/2. It doesn't have a minimum density, and it doesn't have any mandatory mixed use. So they could pick kind of anything from that list of allowed uses as long as it fit within the density ranges and the entitlement, we approve it. Under a new development agreement, I think that's one of the opportunities that we have with the property owner, is to talk about maybe a required mix of uses. What we learned through the Central Isiqua Plan process was that maybe having a minimum FAR or floor area ratio was important for commercial properties, so we didn't end up with underdeveloped property at the end of the day. So I think there's some things that we could potentially add if we went down the path of a new development agreement, so that's something to think about. Years, we have three and a half years left on the Highlands Agreement. If we applied standard zoning after 2017, that would not have a time limit to it, and if we were talking about a new development agreement, most likely we'd be talking about somewhere between 10 and 15 years for that property to develop. I added parks at the end because that's been something that did come up at Land and Shore, and it's something that comes up a lot with the Highlands. There is no standard for parks. In other words, there's not a requirement that a certain amount of parkland be developed per acre or per housing unit, and that's caused kind of some questions. We don't have anything in the city code, so that's also why there's a zero there, and then if we did a new development agreement, because we know that's something that we might want some greater clarity on, that would definitely be something that we could talk about as part of that process. So the administration believes there's enough potential community benefit to suggest a new development agreement for this property. What the question before the council tonight with this Agenda Bill is really just to authorize the staff to move forward in talking about this with the property owner and seeing if we can find a landing spot where maybe it's a win-win for both parties, and so I think that's hopefully the recommendation, that was also the recommendation that came out of Land and Shore Committee. So with that, that's the end of my presentation.
Councilmember Mertz?
Keith, can you speak to the current maximum residential development on this land and whether this new development agreement would change that?
So I'm going to answer that, I could answer that two different ways, Councilmember. One is, right now, what we're talking about, as shown on the first line, is we're really talking about keeping the entitlements at the same level, so not increasing development for the property. Because this is a TDR-receiving site, when you ask me what's the maximum number of housing units that could go on that property, what I would tell you is the current maximum residential density is 80 units per acre, and it's 60 acres, so 4,800 is the maximum number, but they would have to buy that many transfer development rights, and I don't think there's that many available. So I can't really answer your question specifically because I don't know what the capacity of that property is, but it's a little bit, it's a complicated question because it's a TDR-receiving site, so the property owner could buy additional housing units through the TDR process and bring them in. In terms of what's available remaining in the Isiqua Highlands entitlement, this is the maximum that is allowed. And I can tell I've just lost you on that, but that's the real answer to your question. So can I answer it a different way? Could you pose it a different way? Maybe not quite so open-ended? Do you understand where I went with that?
Well, perhaps you could explain it like you did at the committee level, which is what they're sort of generally looking at doing.
So the number of housing units, let me try it this way. So the number of housing units that is planned under scenario one, which is build out under the Highlands Development Agreement, is 365. That's how many they would like to build out there under the Highlands Agreement. The number that they've told us that they'd like to build out under a new development agreement would also be 365. So that 365 number over the number of acres they own is not going to change whether it's a new development agreement or the existing Highlands Agreement.
Councilmember Mertz?
But the entitlement, the...
What happens to the millions per acre?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
So there's 265 housing units that Port Blakely used to own?
Right.
That's now owned by the landowner?
Right.
If they want to build 365 housing units, they buy 100 TDRs from Regal Bank.
Right.
365. 265 plus 100, 365.
No, I, I'm...
And they can put that on, they could put that on the property.
Right.
Okay.
And under a new DA?
365. That's a cap for them. They don't want to go beyond 365.
It's a cap in what sense? If it's what they, you're telling me what they intend to do, and I'm asking what is allowable?
Since the development agreement is not written, it's an open book at this point.
Right.
That's part of the process of drafting the development agreement and going through the public process through both UVDC and Land and Shore, is to talk about the total entitlement that's planned.
So the decision tonight does not grant any new entitlement?
It does not.
That is exactly what I was looking for.
Sorry if I misunderstood your question.
Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Winterstein?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move to direct the administration to proceed with negotiation and preparation of a development agreement, assigning monthly oversight to the Council Land and Shore Committee.
Second. Moved by Winterstein and seconded by Butler, and now an opportunity for more discussion and questions from the council. Councilmember Goodman?
I think the general consensus at, or general thought at Land and Shore was that this would allow the administration to negotiate a development agreement and try to find a way to use that land that benefits the city. We're unsure what that is, but unless we embark on some negotiations, we don't know. And so I'm supportive of this.
Other questions or discussion from the council on this topic? Is the council ready to act on this motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. The next two agenda items that are coming before the council have to do with ballot measures and material for the King County Voters Pamphlet. And the first one is an ordinance having to do with the retail carryout bags. The second one is a King County Voters Pamphlet that has to do with the Kohani annexation ordinance, Kohani annexation topic, and both of those are ordinances that would request the King County Director of Elections... And both of those are ordinances that would request the King County Director of Elections to prepare and distribute a Voters Pamphlet for the special election on February 11th, 2014, for the purpose of the ballot proposition that is under consideration. So, they're two different topics, but both asking King County Elections to do that Voters Pamphlet. And it's also an appointment of committees for submitting arguments for and against in both instances, and authorizing the city attorney to prepare an expletive, the explanatory statement. So, the first one is the Proposition Concerning Retail Carryout Bags. Sure. We're going to have the material that the council just received put up on the screen. And this has to do with the appointment of pro and con committees. Page 1 is the first Agenda Bill. Let me minimize this here. Councilmember Butler?
I would move to adopt ordinance number... 2704, requesting the King County Director of Elections to prepare and distribute a Voters Pamphlet for the special election on February 11th, 2014, for the purpose of the ballot proposition concerning retail carryout bags in Issaquah, appointing committees for submitting arguments for and against, as shown on the handout and slide before you, and authorizing the city attorney to prepare the explanatory statement.
Second?
Moved by Butler and seconded by Winterstein?
For clarity, I think the motion should, the names of the people, yeah.
And the con committee opposing the repeal, Mark Mullet and Susan Thoman, and the pro committee supporting the repeal, Craig Keller, Tim Ives, and Sabilia.
There are only two.
The only, oh, there are only two of those that, so Craig Keller and Tim Ives for supporting the repeal.
Questions or discussion from the council?
Yeah, we second.
Yeah, it was moved by Butler and seconded by Winterstein.
Thank you for that, Claire.
Questions or discussion from the council? Councilmember Winterstein?
It's an aggressive schedule over the holidays, so unfortunate for that, but I appreciate everybody stepping up on both sides of this. And it's, I appreciate that, you know, doing, I think it's due on January 4th, I mean, the final final, so that's a lot of work over the holidays. So, I thank everybody for stepping forward to do this work.
Any other discussion or questions? I would note that in the instance, I have chosen two people to serve on each committee. That in no way precludes the committees from working with other individuals. It's simply that those people are identified, one of whom will serve as a spokesperson for the Voters Pamphlet. Any other questions or discussion? Is the council ready to act then on Agenda, or ordinance number 2704? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. And you have the information before you, for the next ballot measure, which is in regard to the Kohani annexation vote. Councilmember Barber?
I'd like to make a motion, please, to move to adopt ordinance number... Requesting the King County Director of Elections to prepare and distribute a Voters Pamphlet for the special election on February 11th, 2014, for the purpose of the ballot measure concerning the Kohani annexationary, appointing committee for submitting arguments for and against, as presented, and authorizing the city attorney to prepare the explanatory statement.
Second?
Okay, moved by Barber and seconded by Butler. And now, questions or discussion from the council? Questions? Yes, sir. Councilmember Scher? Oh. Identify the individuals?
Thank you.
Okay.
Mark Seeley, David Kapler, Richard Lahou, excuse me. I'm not sure of the pronunciation. Lahou, and Michael Foss.
And the first names were people in opposition, the con committee, and the second were the pro committee?
Pro committee.
Thank you for that clarification. Questions or discussion? Councilmember Scher?
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, it's my comment is related to this point, so I'm glad we mentioned the names. I didn't raise this on the last ballot measure because there were really only two names on the con committee and a host of names on the pro committee. But there can be up to three individuals appointed on a ballot-writing committee pursuant to 29A 32 280. And that statute vests the legislative authority of a jurisdiction with the decision-making ability to select the committee to prepare arguments for and against a particular ballot measure. You know, I have been regularly voting in opposition to any matters pertaining to the proposed annexation of the Kohani neighborhoods that are barely contiguous to our city. In this situation, the individuals who are on the proposed committee roster include a gentleman who lives in that area within the neighborhoods, Mr. Seeley, Mr. Kapler, who is an Issaquah resident and a former council member. But I noticed that Councilmember Jerrand, who is with the city of Sammamish, and that city has expressed an interest in potentially annexing, should the residents of Kohani choose not to proceed with Issaquah annexation, is not slated for appointment. I would be willing to support a proposed list of candidates to write these ballot statements and support this bill if another individual was added to both sides to constitute a committee of three, thus adding Mr. Jerrand's name to the con side, and one of the other two individuals, although it looks like Senator Mullet's going to have his dance card full with writing ballot measures, but perhaps the other individual on the pro side, since we are allowed up to three by law. I'm not making a motion at this time, but I'm just throwing that out there for the council's consideration.
Other discussion or comments or questions from the council? Councilmember Winterstein?
So, I don't, this is a first time for me, so I want to try to connect some dots. Our action tonight would be to appoint two individuals to both, one each, two to the pro and two to the con side. Did I hear earlier that these individuals are free to solicit the support from any, some number of other individuals in completing their work?
They are. The names of additional individuals would not appear. If the council were to adopt this particular motion, then, or ordinance, two names would appear in the Voters Pamphlet, pro and con. That does not preclude the pro and con committees from seeking the advice and input of other individuals. It's simply that the other individuals' names are not there in the Voters Pamphlet.
Okay.
But they may consult with them, work with them, do what they wish in support or opposition of the particular topics. Other questions or comments from the council? Is the council ready to act upon this? All right. The motion before you is to adopt ordinance number 2705 as just described. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that was six in favor and one in opposition. Councilmember Scher in opposition to that item. The next item is Good of the Order, which is an opportunity for the council to speak to matters that they wish to, and they may include committee, additional committee information or regional reports if people have not had the opportunity to speak to those. So, I'll ask if there are any items for the Good of the Order that the council wishes to speak to. Councilmember Polly?
I have one item tonight. I sat in for Councilmember Marts on the Public Issues Committee, and he had brought to the last council meeting a quick question of the council on how they felt about, I think it was called international, international relations vote, which was an idea that was being discussed at this group about allowing cities to set up a fund to support those kinds of activities. The only update I have to add to that is that the discussion at the last meeting, which was a week ago, was that the group felt it was premature to bring it to a vote until they had found a sponsor and had some draft legislation. So, they tabled that issue, and that's the only one I'm bringing up tonight because it was discussed at the last meeting. There is, there is a list of potential legislative issues that they would also like to discuss with council, but I need to go over those with Councilmember Marts and figure out how to solicit advice before the next meeting, which is Wednesday, January 9th. That was it.
Thank you. Councilmember Scher?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we spent a fair amount of time around this dais when we had a council member depart us recently, and tonight, being the auspicious occasion of your departure from these proceedings, I would like to take a moment to personally thank you in my own words as well. And I have enjoyed my service on this council during your tenure as mayor for a limited portion of that time. Although we may have disagreed on topics over the years, as the last vote, in fact, evidences, I believe that your influence in this city will be felt for decades to come, and in fact, that you, Mayor Freisinger, will likely be remembered as probably the most influential mayor in our city's history. All the great things that you have accomplished during your tenure, the preservation of land, the unparalleled growth that we have experienced, the economic vitality of this city, so many of those things are owed to your leadership and strong hand as mayor of our city. So, I just wanted to use this opportunity during Good of the Order to thank you openly and personally for your service.
Thank you. Nothing that is accomplished is ever done by a single individual, or very little is accomplished by a single individual, but by people collectively. And in this city, we have had the great good fortune to have a very good working relationship between our various branches of government, our legislative and our executive branch, which I've been reminded is not always the case, and I can look to cities fairly nearby who have, who did not have that good working relationship. But this one has always been a team effort. There have, at times, been stressors and tensions, but that's the nature of the different roles, I think. And it's, it's been a delight to work with all the different councils, and a particular delight to work with this council. So, thank you very much. Any other items for the Good of the Order? All right. If not, we will be moving into an executive session this evening to discuss potential litigation, and that is under RCW 42.30.110 bracketed 1 bracketed lowercase i. The item is expected to take approximately 30 minutes, and action is not anticipated. So, we will be going into executive session, coming out of executive session, and unless there's something really unusual that happens, we will adjourn after the executive session and move it back into the regular session.